The committee reports, the policy committee report.
We will add as number three under committee. Anything else?
Also maybe adding some, do we have need six or we can either six thirty?
I think we think that our officers group should discuss that.
I am soliciting support for. Okay, whatever you say, it's not a big deal, but it is facilitating. I mean, we are at home, had to go and move, then I don't see any reason why we had to do it at six o'clock.
The re- one of the reasons that. Of the board is that I know in my case, for example, yes, I'm home, but I'm home with two young children. And to start a meeting at six thirty means that more than likely. Starting six o'clock is much. Your input from other members who have young children and there was, there was. The will of the board to change it to six thirty, I'm certainly willing to do that.
That's a good, you know, thank you.
I was just gonna call a point of order and if Dr. Rodriguez would like to add that as an item of discussion, we should put that as an item, but then move forward, present an agenda.
What is the discussion item in the agenda? Yes, in the discussion. You have any numbers to discussion item?
Yeah. It's section ten.
Okay, then we will put whatever happened, happened if you want, if you don't want, it's okay with me.
Okay. Then I add that as C.
Okay.
Okay, I know that we had one submission for public comment. Um, and I don't believe I see that person present, that person's name is Tyrone Green. And I don't see that person in attendance this evening, so we're gonna go ahead and move on to presentations. And our first presentation will be Everett Library Recognition, Mr. Sinicropi.
Yes, thank you. This is Mr. Randy Riley from the library, librarian of the state of Michigan. Welcome, sir, and Joy Curry from Everett High School, who is being recognized tonight for some of her standing work. Boy, welcome, turn it over to you, Mr. Riley.
Thank you, thanks for having me, and I see you have a fairly full agenda, so I appreciate you giving me a few moments to talk about. This award. The Library of Michigan, I mean, we congratulate Joy and all the hard work she's done at the Everett High School Library Media Center. And Principal Gundrum for his support of that library. A little bit, School Libraries for the Twenty First Century is.
Stop you for a moment, Jamie Riley is a woman. I mean, I'm sorry, Jamie Gundrum is a woman. And I just couldn't let that go without making that correction.
Okay, thank you. The School Libraries for the Twenty First Century, it's a benchmark program that the Library of Michigan. Manages and it's a, it's an opportunity for school libraries across the state to do self evaluation. Identify strong things that they're doing, identify some areas that they would like to improve in. And each year, the Library of Michigan receives applications from school libraries across the state. And selects one school library to be the model Twenty First Century School Library. This year, that award goes to Everett High School and their library. And accepting the award, they become for that year, a lead library that is. Available for other school libraries to approach and ask for advice and assistance on how they do the various things that they're doing. So that the media center, the library at Everett as doing some wonderful things. I think one of the things that stood out to the selection committee that was looking through the application is. That Joy's focus within that library goes beyond just the walls of Everett High School. And she involves the community and a lot of the things that she's trying to do. Besides the academic support, she involves community groups. For instance, she's worked with local landlords to teach kids about what the process is when you have to actually go out. And rent a place to live and what that takes to make it work. She's invited Michigan State University resident advisors to come in. And talk to students about what that next phase of life is gonna be when they start living on a college campus. And she's done great things like offering programs that are teaching kids about just cooking and nutrition and the value. That all of those have to becoming well rounded students and, and I think has been very successful in growing the world of Everett students that. That are there, so we do have the award that eventually, hopefully someday. We can deliver in person and have it displayed someplace prominently in the Library Media Center within Everett. I also, I commend the Lansing School Board for valuing school libraries. In these challenging economic times to say having school libraries is something that's important to us, I agree with that. In the last 10 years, the state of Michigan has lost about sixty percent of our school libraries. So the fact that Lansing is still saying school libraries are important to a complete development of a student. I commend all of you on doing that and, and that attitude is what makes it possible for people like Joy to succeed. In their, their position, so again, I want to thank the, and congratulate the staff of Everett High School, especially. That have Everett High School Library and Media Center for being this year's model SL twenty one library, so congratulations. And Joy, do you want to say a few things? Am I putting you on the spot, the work she does with the students really in her application, the folks at the Library of Michigan that read that application were. Very touched by the fact that she does see her, her role as more than just what happens in that building, but what happens in the community around the school as well.
Well, thank you, Mr. Riley, and thank you, Ms. Gundrum, for your support. And I look forward to working with the Library of Michigan this year and doing a lot of really interesting and great things throughout the state, so thank you.
Thank you, Joy, Jamie, would you like to say a couple of words here?
Uh, thank you, I just wanna thank Joy for her hard work and dedication. She works really hard to make the library a true student centered library and a welcoming place for all students. She's continuing to work really hard remotely to make sure to put as many resources as possible in front of our students. So I just wanna thank her for her hard work and we really appreciate receiving this recognition.
Thank you, Jamie, and congratulations again, Joy, and thank you, Mr. Riley, we really appreciate this award and we concur that. Everett wouldn't be the same without the media center run by Joy Curry.
It's, we think it's a big deal and hopefully all of you do too, and I have to say in passing, as a. A person growing up going to Ionia High School in the late seventies, I wanted to still be a student at Everett High School with Irvin Johnson at that time, so. Always Everett High School has had a special place because of obviously magic and the, and the things he did in the basketball world.
Thanks for, that was great, thank you.
Thanks, thanks for having me.
You're welcome. President Lawrence, that concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much and congratulations Everett, Everett is a very special place, Mr. Riley, you're certainly right about that. We're gonna. Okay, okay, I mean, it's, it's a special place, but we have a lot of special high schools in Lansing. We're gonna move on to report from superintendent this evening, Mr. Sinicropi.
Thank you, President Lawrence. Wednesday, September thirtieth was a school district's first professional development day. Approximately one day each month, the school district staff will participate in professional development throughout the school year. These days take the place of late start Wednesday, which was discussed in the spring. This past Wednesday was filled with outstanding speakers and other activities. Among our speakers, for the third time, we had Dr. Tyrone Howard back from UCLA. Who mesmerized us in, in his words and his passion. But I'm gonna just give him one more, you know, kudo, and that is, he's. He's presented three times with us in Lansing at nine AM and he lives in Los Angeles, so he's gotta get up early to do it too, so we appreciate that. We also had Dr. Alfred Breland Noble, who was as, as a follow up to Dr. Howard and she held her own, she was, she was great. And we look, we really enjoyed it. Third on the list that day was Ben Botwinski and I felt kinda bad for Ben, he was talking about teacher evaluation, but he held his own too. And our last speaker of the day was Tara Rosen, who did a Title Nine presentation for us. One, one other thing, an offshoot of our first PD day was once again. A discovery that we did not have enough spaces available for our entire staff. So once again, now we have upped our Zoom webinar thing that if we run out of. Places or space now, that means we picked up, we've doubled our student population, so that'll be exciting to watch. I guess that's it, now for the did you knows, let's go to Ms. Corbin.
Thank you, Mr. Sinicropi, good evening. Did you know that our LEA lunch assistants have been supporting Sedexo Magic with their meal distribution? Many of the lunch assistants will be working in different locations so that we can ensure that there are two LSD staff at each site. A very special thank you to our LEA leadership and our employees for being flexible and supportive of the district and our students.
Thank you, Mr. Keck.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, good evening. Did you know that the Lansing School District Adult Education Program continues to serve our community? By engaging students through the screen to screen model of instruction. And we offer GEDs, high school diploma, English as a second language, and workforce development opportunities. I'm very sorry. Um, we also continue to provide GED instruction to incarcerated individuals through our long lasting partnership with the Ingham County Jail. Currently, we have over one hundred adults participating, participating in our programs. And we're specially honored this year to be recipients of three federal grants. Which would allow the adult education program to expand, grow, and improve our services to the surrounding community. Finally, did you know that today started the Capital Area United Way campaign? And we already raised five thousand dollars in the first day, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keck, Mr. Lang.
Good evening, did you know we are now in our fifth year of bond projects from our hundred and twenty million dollar bond that was approved in May two thousand sixteen? We're also in our second year of our ten year sinking fund projects approved in May two thousand nineteen that is expected to generate over seventy million dollars in revenue. Projects that will be finishing up this fall renovations at Atwood, Sexton Beakman roofs, and North Elementary Park Lot. The new additions and renovations at Everett will continue through next summer. And the major projects that will be bid out later this fall to start spring include renovations at Lexford in North and additional work at Sexton to include. The upgrade to the cafeteria, secure main entrance, and a breezeway connector to the annex, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lang, Ms. Black.
Thank you. Did you know through our STAR grant, the Lansing School District recently purchased a socio emotional learning curriculum called Connect With Kids? Through a dynamic customized website, our staff, students, and parents now have access to an evidence based curriculum with. User friendly lesson plans, parent engagement programming, hundreds of streaming videos, professional development. For our staff and educational resources with an emphasis on social emotional learning, mental health, and social justice, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Diaz.
Good evening, everyone, did you know the Capital Area District Library is partnering with Lansing School District on a project called the Student Success Initiative? It's a way to help students easily access all the education and entertainment options available at Kettle's thirteen branches, mobile library, and online connections. This card is free to all students, no matter where they live, even those who already have a regular library card. Thank you.
Dr. Chapman.
Hugh Superintendent Sinicropi, and good evening, everyone. Did you know that today, October first kicks off college month? Yes, across the nation Lansing School District, along with others, will be celebrating. College application completion, college decision day, and a variety of activities. That steer our students to the opportunity of post secondary education. We are very happy to be in partnership with our Capital Area College Access Network. And we appreciate the work that Michelle Strauss and our college advisors are planning for the class of twenty twenty one. Yes, even in the midst of a pandemic, we are having activities virtually, including our annual spaghetti dinner. What creation are we looking forward on that, a virtual spaghetti dinner? So we just wanted to reiterate to our class of twenty twenty one, today's the day, start making decisions. Remember in the Lansing School District, dream big, and we look and know that we can get you there, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman, one quick follower, final one here is that Wednesday, October seventh is our official count day in the state of Michigan. It'll be a very different count day from those in the past, but we will keep you informed as to what count day will be looking like as, as we move forward. President Lawrence, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sinicropi and executive team. We are moving on to routine matters and old business, our committee reports are first up. And I am looking at Dr. Brian Beverly for the Facilities Committee update.
Thank you, Madam President. Facilities Committee met on September twenty third. Multiple items were discussed, including bid recommendations for parking lot and sidewalk, sidewalk improvements. We discussed potential of a new lease for City Life at, at Hill. We discussed the Sedexo Magic facilities contract that will be coming into the business. We also discussed the boiler at Willow, needing to break that into two separate service contracts. And then we also discussed property. Property conversation with the city of Lansing Parks and Recreation for property on South Waverly, near Jolly and Home. Our next Facilities Committee meeting is scheduled for October fourteenth at ten AM. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Beverly, moving on to Personnel Committee, Mrs. Willis.
Sorry, I was just trying to picture that intersection you just mentioned, Dr. Beverly, did you say Jolly and Homes?
Between Jolly and Homes.
Oh, okay, I thought you said the intersection, I'm like, Jolly and Homes don't intersect, okay, sorry. Okay, in your packets this evening, you will find the personnel report, there's nothing out of the ordinary. We have some retirement and resignations, including one retirement of a staff member who's been with us for thirty seven years. We have some non hire. On, and for information only, and then for board approval, we have some new hires for LSA as well as some tenures.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Willis.
Oh, Madam Chair.
Mr. Lopez.
Yes, if I may, and Mrs. Willis mentioned Miss Tepther. She happened to be the first teacher my daughter Trini had at, at Allen Street School. She was a new teacher and of course, my baby was a baby, going to the first day of school and it's been great. Was great meeting her, she was really kind and appreciative and all those good things that kindergarten teachers had. And, and through the years, you know, we kept in contact, not every day, but you know. We still reminisce about the first days of her career and of our kids going to school in the Lansing School District, so congratulations to her. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez, it's a really sweet story, thank you for your comment. Moving on to Policy Committee, Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. The Board Policy Committee met on September twenty eighth. The meeting centered on the new Title Nine regulations. The discussion was on a new board policy, number twenty two sixty six. Neora Representative Pat Kiger worked us through the changes and options within the policy. Board policy fifty five one seven point one will be rescinded. The new policy will be coming to the board for first reading later this month. There will be also, I hope, a presentation and explanation of the Title Nine. With the new regulation and new responsibilities. I want also to thank the administration, Michael and Dr. Diaz and our superintendent. For the support they gave us during this meeting was a long one. And also, Ms., Mrs. Milijin said they sent to you the whole meeting that you had assumed that you want to follow the hour and almost an hour meeting. You can follow the whole thing in your computer. I think, if Ms. the other board member want to add something, I will be more than pleased, thank you very much.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our consent agenda for this evening, may I have a motion?
Madam President, okay.
Dr. Beverly.
I moved the Board of Education approved the consent agenda as presented.
So far.
It's been moved by Dr. Beverly, supported by Dr. Rodriguez. The consent agenda this evening includes the approval of the September seventeenth regular board meeting minutes, the receipt and approval of the personnel report. And the approval of parking lot and sidewalk improvement recommendations, any discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Beverly?
Yes.
Dr. Body? Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Ms. Hodgins? Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Lilji?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Ms. Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, we will move on to action items for this evening, first up is certification of voting delegates at MAS B Delegate Assembly. I know, Mr. Lopez, you have frequently been our delegate at MAS B. Are you interested in continuing to do that this year?
Yes, I'm also a member of MAS B, so I need to be, so I.
Okay.
Do we have more than one delegates?
I know we've had alternates in the past, Mrs. Willis, do you recall if we are. Entitled to have more than one.
I can look at that and get back to you on that one.
Okay.
I know last year we were able to. Select two, I don't know, the parameters have changed though.
Yeah. But in the communication from MAS B, it tells you, I don't know if you have it in front of you, or if Mrs. Sinicropi might have it, but. It does, anyway, I, I agree to be a delegate.
Okay, is there anyone who would like to be an alternate or potentially another delegate?
Not everybody at this time.
Okay. And I'm gonna look up this information.
Ms. Hodgins is trying to make a comment.
I think she is. You're muted, Ms. Hodgins.
If you need a delegate, I'd be more than glad, I mean.
Okay.
I would be more than glad, yes.
Okay.
Lawrence, excuse me, I'll follow up to see if we have more than one delegate.
I have been able to find the information, so. Based upon the association's governing documents, voting cannot be held virtually. So there will be no voting at the Delegate Assembly, which is scheduled for first, you know, November fifth, which means that. As many, we can send as many delegates and alternates as we would like.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh. Regarding the motion, the recommended motion on the agenda. If someone could make a motion to include Mr. Lopez, Ms. Hodgins, and Ms. Lilji as. Delegates, not as voting delegates, I think that would be appropriate.
Don't move.
Say it, gun.
Okay, it's been moved by Dr. Beverly, supported by Dr. Rodriguez, and I'm just gonna restate that motion for the sake of clarity. The motion is that the Board of Education support the certification of the following board members as delegates. At the MAS B Annual Leadership Conference Delegate Assembly on November fifth. Mr. Guillermo Lopez, Mrs. Amy Hodgins, and Mrs. Missy Lilji. Any further discussion? Okay, well, the clerk please call the roll.
Dr. Beverly?
Yeah.
Dr. Body? Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Ms. Hodgins?
Yes.
Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Lilji?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, and thank you to our three members who are representing us at MAS B. Moving on to the bid recommendation to purchase Microsoft EES, I know we had our initial discussion about this, I think. Three weeks ago. So any, may I have a motion?
Madam President.
Dr. Burrows.
I moved the Board of Education approved the bid recommendation to purchase Microsoft EES as presented.
It's been moved by Dr. Burrows, supported by. I don't know who that was.
Dr. Rodriguez.
No.
Supported by Dr. Rodriguez. A lot of people, and I thank you all for your support. Any discussion regarding this? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Beverly?
Yes.
Dr. Body? Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodgins? Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mrs. Lilji?
Yes.
This, Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, moving on to new business for this evening, first up is the Sedexo Magic contract. May I have a motion?
Madam President.
Dr. Beverly.
I moved the Board of Education approved the Sedexo Magic contract as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Beverly, supported by Mr. Lopez's discussion. Mrs. Willis.
Just a.
Just a question, if someone could orient me to where in the in the contract does it outline the fee changes for some of the COVID additional costs? And then what, what would we need to do if we go back to school and we need additional cleaning, maybe last minute, or because we have to do a shutdown and we have to do maybe more frequently?
Let me, let me start and then I'll let Mr. Harzley chip in or Mr. Lang. What we are, the basic difference in this contract, this is a fixed amount contract instead of a cost plus contract that we've had in the past. And what we're trying to do is to be able to budget better in terms of how much I spent and so on and so on. What we have now, what we will have with this contract is if something comes up that's outside the parameters of this contract, it has to be approved by myself, Mr. Lang, Dr. Chapman, I mean, somebody along those lines in order for that to happen. So we've talked extensively, in fact, Mark has put together a PowerPoint that we're probably going to have maybe sometime in November where he's going to a PowerPoint about cleaning during the COVID-19 era, but I won't speak for Mark on that. So, Mark, would you add anything or John?
Yeah, I can add in just a little bit on top of the super extended, it's inappropriate. Mrs. Willis, specifically for any additional items that we may have to purchase because of the times we're in. We do have almost $13 million in cares and COVID-type grants that we are working on to allocate to certain things, and some of them are definitely for additional cleaning supplies, PPE, that sort of stuff for the schools. So we've already designated some of those funds for those, those type of purchases. And then we've also discussed with Sedexo Magic to help identify if there's anything that they've already paid for through their contract that we can then shift costs over to help out with our general fund budget on that side too.
Mark?
And what I would add to that is, so when we go to phase five and students come back to school, Sedexo Magic's program for disinfecting cleaning is called Clean for Health. And so it's a program that encompasses everything from the chemicals used to, should we choose to do UV, air cleaning, and electrostatic cleaning, and black light verification of clean buildings. It's a complete comprehensive program. So once we decide that day, Mr. Lang and Mrs. Incropy and Ms. White and myself will look at that and call that out. To answer your question directly, it is not in the base price contract that you are looking.
Okay, that makes sense that it's not called out because it's not in here yet. Okay, thank you.
Further discussion regarding this contract? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Beverly?
Yes.
Dr. Body? Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodgins? Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mrs. Lilge?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Next up is the City Life Lease of Space at Hill Center. May I have a motion?
Madam President?
Ms. Lilge?
I move that the Board of Education approve the City Life Lease of Space at Hill Center as presented.
Any support?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Lilge, supported by Mr. Lopez. Any discussion? I know this is included in our packets, but in case, and we just recently discussed this in our Facilities Committee meeting, but in case any other board members wanted a refresher, we've had a lease with this entity for Katie Crempiff and Rob five years. They've been, by all accounts, really good partners with us. And we are just continuing our partnership with City Life. So if there's no further questions or discussion, will the clerk please call, Mrs. Willis, you're good? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Beverly?
Yeah.
Dr. Body? Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodgins? Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mrs. Lilge?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Willis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to our addition to the agenda, board meeting start time. If anyone has any feelings about or meeting start time, please raise your hand or go ahead.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Lopez?
Yeah. I know what you said earlier today, and I guess we hadn't heard that before. At least I don't remember it. But in we're going to go back to regular meetings sometime, so. And people generally knew that it was at 6:30. You know, it was the general meeting time. I don't know if that's causing any problems or not, but I was looking mostly at Dr. Body's body, sorry, work and, and because of his work, you know, he has been late or absent sometimes because, you know, meeting starts early and he's, right now, he's not on. Maybe when he has time, meeting will be over. And I was looking at that, that as a courtesy, you know, to him, that we just go back to our original time. And that was my thought behind my text to the group.
I understand that. I also just want to point out though, it's 6:39 right now, and if our meeting had started at 6:30, he still wouldn't be in attendance at this point.
I understand that, but you know, generally he gets here on time and maybe a little late sometimes.
Do any other board members have thoughts or feelings about this?
I would just echo your earlier comments that it becomes much more challenging once we move past seven or 7:30 and being, you know, at home with little ones, when you're, when I'm away from the house and meeting at the administration building, that's one thing. But it becomes much more challenging when I'm in the house.
And they know, they know that you can hear them, and they can find you if they look hard enough.
Oh, that's fair. I mean, I'm not discussing, you know, but that's fair. I just wanted, I brought it up. Well, I, by text, and Dr. Lilge has brought it up, which is fine, but I think this will give us
I'm sorry, Mr. Lopez.
A larger understanding as to the reasoning, okay?
Yeah, I was just going to point out that the difference between meeting at home and meeting in a different building with the little ones, but also just usually Dr. Body can make it by six or shortly after. Maybe we should talk to him and see if it would make a big difference in his life, and maybe there's a way to strike a balance. I don't know.
That's a thought.
Yeah, that was just going to be my comment. If this start time is prohibitive to Dr. Body, that's a little bit different than, it's a one-off. And certainly in his line of work, he runs into emergencies all the time that may just outweigh him. So I don't want to speak for him, but I just think given that he has been to more of the meetings virtually since they started at six, I think, and he was able to make it when they started at 6:30 in person. I just think that if today was just an issue, I hate to move the time. I'm also being mindful of staff, and they've done this for years without complaints, but when we have schoolwork meetings that start at 6:30, they're pulling very long days to be with us in our meetings that start that late. And then I'll just echo what's already been said about being home actually makes it significantly harder when I've been in a room locked all day and my kid knows I'm here and it's three more hours into the evening that she can't get to me. I'm happy to ask the president to, to sort of make a decision, and maybe, I think what I'm hearing is the board would like for us to just check in with, check in with Dr. Body to see if this is causing him any issues.
I want to thank the president for discussing this and with all board members. I think it's not a big, big issue, but it's an issue affecting some, in some way, the sentiments, and that is very, very, very delicate. Then I am glad we are talking, that we are expressing what we feel, and I am sensitive, and I think that then maybe we had to ask Dr. Body to see what we can do for him.
I just would like to jump in if I, if I could very short, very quickly, because we've spoken around it, and I think everyone here knows what Dr. Body's profession is, but he's in the health profession, which in this particular time in COVID, when health facilities are very stretched, that, that, that's particularly important job with, with greater burdens than it typically has. So just in case anyone who's listening or watching and doesn't know that, that, that's the profession that we're speaking about, Dr. Body has.
Sure.
Then I think I'll propose that we leave it at six o'clock, at least for the time being. I will reach out to Dr. Body and see if he's got, and I'll just touch base with him and, and open up the line of discussion with him and see if we're going to make any tweaks. And I'm, if I didn't express kind of the reasoning behind having it at six o'clock before, I apologize if I was remiss in not sharing that information with the greater board. But it's just, it's just a killer to be home with little ones and trying to focus and so I appreciate everybody's flexibility, and we can certainly continue this discussion as needed. Thanks, everybody. Moving on to report from Secretary and announcements, Doc?
Thank you, Madam President. Effective Wednesday, September 23rd, 2020, Lansing School District's online help will be provided at Hill Center located at 5815 Wise Road at the south end of the building door number 19. See the Lansing School District website for days and times. Tuesday, October 6th, 2020, Parent University and Trauma and Resilience from 5 to 6:30 PM. Sign up through the Lansing School District website. Wednesday, October 7th, 2020, Count Day. To see why it matters, go to the Lansing School District website to view the YouTube video. Thursday, October 8th, 2020, ISS Meeting at 6:00 PM. Virtual meeting via Zoom with Bynum. Friday, November 9th, 2020, No School. On Thursday, October 15th, regular board meeting at 6:00 PM. Virtual meeting via Zoom with Bynum. This concludes the announcement for this meeting. Thank you.
I wanted to take a moment to remember one of our district's friends and attorneys, Mr. Alan Wallace, who passed away last Saturday morning after a battle with cancer. Al was a partner at Miller Canfield, and that is one of the law firms that the district uses term time to time. Al was a friend of mine, and it's a big loss for our city. I don't know if people are familiar with Al, but typically when I start to describe him as a really all very southern guy, people are like, oh, yeah, yeah, of course, big Al. Al was married to Stacy. They had three children who are 10, 17, and eight. Al has been very involved with economic development in the city in particular, and it's a very tragic loss and really sad thing. So I would appreciate it if everyone would just join me at a moment of silence for Al. Thank you, everyone.
Madam President?
Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you. I appreciate what you presented to us. It's sad, but maybe we need also to follow up with a kind of letter or something to the family to give them our appreciation, condolences from the Board of Education. Maybe our secretary can do that, because we have few of them lately. And the second is, I couldn't ask a question when the Count Day, because my computer was, then I asked him to the superintendent. When we count the students before, we have 10 days to count the one who were sick or the one who were suspended, and then we have 30 days, 30 days for others. Are we having any days extra for counting students this year?
You're muted. You're muted, Sam.
Sam, can't hear you.
Well, it's better. I was going to tell you how much I didn't know. I'll ask Delsa and Kamla maybe to chime in here, but what, Dr. Rodriguez is correct. In the old days, or when we were meeting face to face, we had a certain number of days that students had to return in order for them to count. Right now, you, you get a count with the number of interactions you have, and there's a, there's a required number of those per week, but I'm going to stop and, Delsa or Kamla, I'm beyond what I know right now, what I remember, let's put it that way.
That is correct. Superintendent Sinekope, based on the way that count is being conducted due to our COVID-19 status, we have had the task of logging or documenting a minimum, and this would be very specific to districts that are online. You have to have a minimum or be able to verify two-way communication, and two-way meaning that there has been participation on the part of the family and the teacher that aligns with verifying and or discussing the child's participation and attendance. For students that are absent on Count Day, that two-way communication factor along with verification of login through our system is an exit ticket that verifies that the, the day and time that the student actually returned and that time period that Dr. Rodriguez referred to in terms of the 30-day period, that, that is still in existence. Dr. Diaz, do you have anything to add?
Not particularly. They've changed rules three times since we started, so Jessica is our resident expert, and unfortunately, she's not with us this evening, so. But, but yes, the count, we have the 10 days, as Dr. Chapman shared, and the 30 days, depending on reasoning for absence. Recognize that with so many districts online, that they needed to think about the reasonableness of, of some of their initial asks for attendance tracking, but we were very proactive and put those in place right at the beginning. Actually be covered at a greater extent than Actually be covered at a greater extent than, than we might have been if this rule was in place when we initially started, so. I think we, we want to see everyone on, on Wednesday of next week. We want to see you every day, but especially Wednesday, so that we can be counted.
Thank you.
Mrs. Willis?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to note for the board that we have Dr. Burrows, Dr. Beverly, and I have worked together to solidify the, and select the members of the Diversity and Equity Committee. So our first meeting will be on Tuesday, October 6th, I had to think about it. And so we look forward to getting that ball rolling, Mr. Sinekropri has, and team have solidified the RFP for the equity audit that we would like to complete as we pass in our resolution, so that will be for the board shortly, so that we can vote on that and get the ball rolling. So I just wanted to plug that to the group there. That's moving along. I'm not sure, Dr. Burrows or Dr. Beverly, you have anything to add? Thank you. That's all, Madam President.
Thank you, Mrs. Willis. Dr. Beverly?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to, once again, highlight the heavy lifting that our instructional staff and administrators have been doing over the last few months. Definitely since the start of the school year. I know many of them are also navigating their own challenges with, with either children at home or parent care and things of that nature, and recognizing that the, the world is kind of upside down right now, but our students continue to be provided high-quality instruction as well as engaging opportunities to build relationships with their classmates as well as with their teachers, so. Just wanted to lift that and thank, thank all of our great and wonderful educators across the country.
Thank you, Dr. Beverly. Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I echo Dr. Beverly's statement. That was very good, and we certainly appreciate from all the staff in the district, because they all contribute to our kids' education and well-being. But I wanted to bring up two things. One is that the census count is almost at its final base, I believe, or getting very close to it. And, and I was wondering if the district we were able to do anything to encourage folks to complete the census, because as we all know, census really affects funding, federal funding for schools and, and roads and all those things, particularly the schools. So that's one, and the other one is that I voted early, and encouraged the public who's viewing to, to do the same, or they haven't registered, or solicit their ballot to do so. It's so easy to do it, so. Encourage you to go vote. And on the census, and do, do we have any, do you have any input on that, any thing that we might be doing to encourage or counting the kids in school? How does, how does that work out?
Well, I can tell you that Mr. Keck and Mr. Eldon McGraw, when he was here, were part of the city group that was working on the census for the, for our region. We have put out communication. We have touted it on our Facebook page and on our website. It's kind of interesting right now, because not being face to face, it's not like, you know, you have posters or anything else like that, so the communication has to be different, but I would ask Mr. Keck if he had anything to add, because he's been heavily involved in the, in the process.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Superintendent. In addition to what the Superintendent said, we did many robocalls, we translated robocalls in nine different languages for the hard-to-count population. We have flyers that we mailed out, and some that were sent to the home, so. We tried as much as we could, but, you know, through the middle of this campaign or this census count, we had a pandemic, and that was, that kind of changed the the strategy that we had, but we did as much as we could with phone calls, robocalls, and social media.
Well, thank you. That's, that's very meaningful, and I'm sure that the more people hear about it, the, the more they will think about filling out the application. So, and it's so important to get those census forms in, for obvious reasons, 10, 10 years that, that it will affect, you know, this census will affect us for 10 years. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. I, I think the census deadline was yesterday.
Was yesterday?
I think so.
Are they gonna do, well, now, are they gonna do house to house, or, or try to?
I know that there have been efforts throughout Lansing to do that, because my dad has been involved in that. Evidently, the deadline is now October 5th, so people have until Monday. There's a lot of various information that I see on here.
Yeah.
Anyway, we hope that everybody filled out their census. It's really easy. It took a couple of minutes. No big deal. Any other, Mrs. Willis, do you have another comment, or is your hand just still up? Okay. Okay, well, with no further business before the board, at 6:57, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
Have a great day.